Call a muted order, we start with the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll consider the February 15, 2017 agenda. Any additions, deletions, corrections, or go as presented?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Jim, seconded by Sean to approve a agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Then we go to comments, updates, and concerns. We start out with citizens, any comments from citizens? Counsel?
I have none.
At the EDA meeting the other night, we did discuss the need for the workshop for city staffing regarding the EDA planning zoning joint workshop that we need to get scheduled sooner than later to talk about where we're going with staffing for the city. So, need to do that, and Lori just informed us that we've got RS fiber in the building here again, and so, that's great. Encourage everybody to sign up.
Anything else, counsel? I have nothing, so we'll move on. That brings us to consent agenda. There again, a consent agenda, time to review that, anything there, any corrections, deletions, corrections, or go as presented?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion made by Jessica, seconded by Tom to approve consent agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. We do not have any public hearings tonight. So that brings us to communication requests and petitions, 7A, presentation of life savings award, Chief Tony.
Mayor, counsel, visitors, I'm Tony Padilla, Chief of Police for the City of Gaylord. Today we have a unique opportunity to award and present some certificates for some members of the ambulance, the police department, and Ridgeview paramedic for some actions that they took on September 13th. So, without further ado, can we get the following people to come forward? From the Gaylord Police Department, Officer Dan Reich, and if you could just stand kind of behind Sean there, maybe the first one. From the Gaylord ambulance, we'd like to have Joe Kufold and Tony Draggert. And then from Ridgeview ambulance service, Joe Hernandez. Amy Hahn was also part of the crew, but unfortunately she couldn't make it tonight, she's at a conference. So, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna kinda read you the narrative from the police report, an excerpt from the police report that was written about the event that took place on September 30th at 6:12 PM. Officer Dan Reich heard Sibley County dispatch page Gaylord ambulance to Oak Terrace for a fall with a possible head injury. Upon arrival, Officer Reich was approached by an Oak Terrace employee running towards him. The employee told Officer Reich a patient was in cardiac arrest. Officer Reich contacted dispatch and requested Gaylord Ridgeview paramedic to respond. Officer Reich obtained his medical bag and AED from the rear of the patrol vehicle. Officer Reich rushed inside the building to the patient's room and noticed a male lying face up on the floor. Officer Reich noticed Oak Terrace staff performing chest compressions. The patient's face was turning blue, his eyes were open, and his pupils were nonreactive. Officer Reich opened the patient's tee-shirt and applied AED pads. Officer Reich activated the AED and was advised he could shock the patient. Officer Reich delivered a shock to the patient and told the staff to continue CPR, which is normal protocol. The shock was delivered at 6:14, and that's two minutes after the call came out. So that's amazing response time. Gaylord ambulance crew members began arriving on the scene, there were two minutes of CPR that were performed, and then the AED reanalyzed. The AED informed them to not shock, and Officer Reich checked for a pulse in the jugular and felt a weak pulse. It also appeared the patient had shallow breathing at the time. Oak Terrace staff, the ambulance staff, and Officer Reich then put the patient onto a backboard and ultimately into the ambulance on a stretcher. Officer Reich looked in the patient's mouth and noticed vomit. The officer attempted to put in an aero airway and noticed that the patient didn't have a gag reflex. So Officer Reich then suctioned the patient's mouth and ended up inserting an oral airway, that's called a King oral airway because it's more advanced than the one he had. The ambulance used a bag valve mask to breathe for the patient and his color began to improve. The patient was rushed from his room to the ambulance and loaded. The paramedic arrived at Oak Terrace, jumped in the back of the ambulance, and started to care for the patient. While en route to Sibley Ridgeview Medical Center, the ambulance crew continued working on the patient. The patient survived this cardiac arrest due to the quick reactions of Oak Terrace staff, the Gaylord Police Department, the Gaylord ambulance, and the Ridgeview paramedic. Please join me in a round of applause for these lifesaving members. Thank you very much for your high level of service. At this time, the mayor will provide some awards and certificates. First will be Officer Dan Reich, he's receiving the Gaylord Police Department lifesaving award and a certificate of appreciation.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Officer Reich will be able to wear a small ribbon on his uniform now to represent his lifesaving award. Next, from the Gaylord ambulance, we have Joe Kufold and Tony Draggert, and they'll be receiving certificates of appreciation as well. And last but not least, from the Ridgeview ambulance paramedic, Joe Hernandez, will be receiving a certificate of appreciation.
Thank you very much.
If you have another round? Thank you.
Ty would like to skip the next one and include it in his report, if that is all right with counsel?
Okay, we should've brought that up at the beginning, but we can move that down. Okay, 7B is gonna be moving down to 8B. Moves us to 7C, Prairie Line Trail project information.
Mayor and counsel, I included this information in the packet for your information. The committee on the Prairie Line Trail is being re-coming back together again to continue working on that Prairie Line Trail plan. And they had a meeting last week, and unfortunately I had a meeting that conflicted with that one, so wasn't able to attend. But I will be talking to Liza tomorrow, Liza Dunnebauer from Arlington, and getting information from her.
Okay, then 7C is an informational thing too for the League of Minnesota Cities Conference. Any question on that? Then we'll move on to 8, Department and Committee reports and recommended action items, and we start out with 8A, the Police Department, and Chief Tony.
I'm here tonight to request three different things, and I'll start out with the first one, which is a new server, or just a server for the Police Department. We requested in our budget this year to have a server, just to stop some of the issues that we're having. If, right now, if a laptop goes down, there's no redundancy there, we lose everything that's on that. The server will give us the ability to have some backup when it comes to that, as well as other things. We have video that we download from our watch guard as well, it could be crucial if the computer that it's going to right now goes down, we'll lose all that, with the server, we'll have that backup. So, I requested in the budget a cost of $7,150. I received two quotes that are attached to this request action, and that is the cheaper of the two quotes, so I requested a motion to approve the purchase of the server.
Jim, do you wanna bring up your concerns at this time, what you were talking about earlier before the meeting started?
Well, yeah, and it's not a concern at all about the police.
No, no, but just an idea.
Spurred my idea that, you know, when I saw you talking about a server, it got me thinking about City Hall here, and we're operating, and I'm sure we just ordered, and as Lori indicated, that they're coming early March, why we aren't looking at a citywide server and, you know, instead of all the individuals, because your concerns would be the same concerns we should have here at City Hall. Get everybody linked together, and I'm wondering if, you know, certainly in no way, not suggesting we do something like this, but could we look at getting some quotes still, possibly putting on hold those units? Or would they be ones that could be used with the server? You know, I'm just thinking out loud here without knowing anything, but maybe we should really look at this a lot deeper.
We ordered, we're just, you can just use, I mean, City Hall has a server, we bought it, and we bought the Laser Beach program.
Okay. So, that's being used as the main, and is there capabilities connecting on, like, city services, or more to it?
No, unfortunately, that's the route that we look, because I was informed that they had a server here, and we didn't have a server, so I asked questions about that, and they're operating independently versus having a bunch of them for the whole city. They said it wasn't possible. I'm sure for a cost, anything's possible, but...
Of course it is.
We're not in the same building.
We're not in the same building, yeah.
Can you know RS fiber, making, what possibilities might be open up there?
Well, the same building shouldn't matter, I know companies that happen to work for one that's got a server in Belle Plaine that handles every operation we have worldwide, so certainly that's not an issue, but it's a matter of what the server is, capabilities, and again, I'm dumb, I admit it, when it comes to this technology, but seems to me we should, you know, maybe, if we're gonna spend a bunch of money here, a bunch of money on computers, maybe there's some opportunities here as well. Also, it might tie into the fact that we have all these independent buildings where we're paying independent internet fees and phone fees and all that for, if you have a server that serves the whole city, it probably can feed that internet to every office, every location as well. I mean, I just, it seems to me we should look for an expert to come in and, you know, at least tell us what we don't know. And I might be not knowing a thing about what I'm talking about, but seems like an idea that makes sense.
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying. My past employer, we had multiple buildings too, but each location had their own server system in it, and then they were connected together at a different location, so I understand what you're saying. I just don't know how to do that big piece of it.
Yeah, I either. Like I said, it's nothing to do with this, I think we should, I'm totally in favor of this, don't take that the wrong way. It just got me thinking out loud, is what it did.
Just for an example, I know it can be done, because when I was running my store at Napa, Napa goes nationwide.
Yeah.
And our main server's in Dallas, Texas, that runs all the Napa stores in the nation. But yeah, that's a whole different deal than here, but if a guy can get something like that on a mini scale like that, because then the updates after that, us as store owners at that point, did the updates within our stores is a lot cheaper than doing that main server all the time. But there again, it's just looking at different things if it's even possible, nor do I know if it's possible in this type of atmosphere or not.
Yep.
I would almost think that yours would probably still wanna be independent of a active server being, you know, law enforcement probably, just thinking out loud again.
Well, I know you can lock 'em down and grant access to who you want to get in there. I guess what I was saying is like, each building would still have to have their own, and then they're just connected by another...
They'd have their own little hub.
Right.
They'd have their own hub unit in there.
Yeah. So, that actually, that is one and two, because number two for my agenda was to look at some kind of a backup system, is what we are running into right now, is we have all of our videos on external hard drive, and we keep all of our audio and stuff like that from our police contacts, and so, it takes up a lot of space. And then, now with body camera ultimately coming at some point, trying to like lean forward a little bit and be prepared, so, are you looking at tabling?
I don't think we should table this.
No, no. My next question would be, no, I wanna move forward with it, I think it's a question for everybody involved within the city, is that something to look forward to on our next preparing budgets? If it's something that can be brought up later at a time when things are starting to age out again?
Yeah.
And that type of deal. No, we need to move forward, I understand that.
Okay.
But my next question would be, is I notice some of the dates on these, are these prices still good because the quotes are dated out, are they still good?
Yeah, I've kept in contact with them, and we're still good to go. As a matter of fact, I just talked to them the night before I came, and so we're still good, we're still good to go. Fortunately. It has been a while. So, do you want me to present the motions, any...
Well, the way we got it in here, we'll do it with one at a time, because the pricing is different, so we can't put them together the way it was put in our packet. So yeah, where you started with, go back to that and put it in the pricing, which one you would suggest?
Right. So, regarding the purchase of the new server, the cost for the new server is $7,150, it's we received two quotes on that, and so I'd like to ask for a motion to be made to purchase the server.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Sean, seconded by Tom to approve for the new server at a price of All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Then you can present the storage part next.
Okay, the second portion of this, the second agenda item, is to purchase a computer storage space. The reason that we're looking at doing this is so that we can store our squad videos that we have right now, audio from police contacts, and then looking forward at body camera video, which is a huge storage need for that, so I would request a motion to approve.
Now, this here, just to bring counsel up to speed here, if you look in your packet, this was not budgeted for our 2017 budget, so everybody understands that. So this money would be coming out of general fund.
I think we did get quite a bit of additional fines and such than we budgeted for. So, I mean, I see no problem with it, so I'd make a motion to approve the storage, computer storage at $2,100.
Second.
Motion made by Jim, seconded by Sean to approve the storage for the computer at the Police Department at a cost of $2,100. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. You got one more in there?
Yes, sir, the final one is regards to the part-time wages. We requested in our budget to get the part-time wages raised from $15 an hour to the initial wage scale of our police officers, so step one basically for our police officers. The rate now is $19 an hour, and basically the part-time officers do the same exact job of a full-time officer, so we should, my theory is we should at least be paying them what the entry level police officer is making. Again, I factored that into my budget for this year, so at this time I'd like to make a motion to approve the pay increase for the part-time officers.
I'll make a motion to approve the part-time police officer wages. Second.
Motion made by Sean, seconded by Jessica to raise part-time pay to what is considered our step one, right, Tony?
Yes, sir.
Of all part-time police officers, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries.
Please, sir.
Thanks, Tony.
Thanks, Tony. Don't run away.
I won't.
Go have a, go to Casey's, get a pizza.
And we move on to 8B, and we got City Services Department, Ty.
Good evening. First I wanna just start off with the annual report, I just wanna go through it real quick. First with the Street Department, some of the things we did this year, purchased new bat wing mower. Just an update on the compost site, it's going well. We need to put up some free compost signs because we have a lot of it. Pretty soon we won't be able to get, we'll have to get rid of it some other way, begging people to take it. Crack sealing project this year, they laid about 4,500 pounds of sealant. Seal coating was completed, project was completed, and parts of Court Park, Harris and Cleveland, Fourth and Fifth Streets around the courthouse, both Third Street in front of the nursing home, and the city-owned parking lots north and south of Main Street and Fifth Street. Last year we had a total plowable, six snow events. The first event was December 1st, 2015, the last event was March 23rd, 2016, which is coincidental because the last snow the year before was March 23rd, 2015. We had nine snow events prior to that year, and right now we are at four, so hopefully we don't need more the way it's looking. Go-for-one calls last year, they marked three, they fielded 341 locates, as compared to the year before was 597, so it was quite a bit less. A lot of that last year was RS fiber there in November and December, I believe, there was a lot there. Parks and grounds, just an overview, still cleaning the sidewalks during the snow events, it's going, seems to get a little better and a little better as we get it down. Setting up and take down fencing, temporary street signs, cones, and the stage for extravaganza every year. Setting up and maintaining the ice rink during the winter, which isn't going very well the last couple of years. New mulch was purchased and installed for the main playground last year. Wi-Fi, the free Wi-Fi project was installed in late fall at the Green Shelter, Walshfield, and the Aquatic Center. The playground area and the tennis court area, as well as downtown, will be completed this year. The older picnic table, or picnic shelter, excuse me, on the east side was rehabilitated by some members of the park board. New picnic shelters built from across the Aquatic Center, all on donation. Blacktop material was added to both sides of the walk bridge to eliminate a pretty bad trip hazard, and also to control erosion down the side there. And several dead trees in the woods area have been marked, and they're gonna probably be removed this, they're all dead, there's six or seven of them that are dead, so we're gonna try to clean them up. Moving on to the Water Department, the city, as well as Bob, received the wastewater treatment facility operational award. I think he's gotten it every year, every year since he's been here, and I think this is his 16th or 17th award since he's been in the business. What that says is basically he has no violations, all his paperwork is correct, all that stuff, they're, pretty good job. Just an overview, the water, the treatment plant has two separate high-service pumps and filters, they can both produce 750 gallons per minute each, they feed off of two wells, which are well 4 and 5. We have well 3 that's connected to the plant, but we only use it for emergencies. In 2016, the reserve capacity for the city increased from 460,000 gallons from the water towers to 800,000 gallons with the addition of the new tower. Below you'll see the total gallons pumped into last year, which was 202 million, in 2015 was 208 million, in 2014 it was 231 million. A lot of that has to do with the bird flu, they really got hit hard last year, our water usage went way down. I just want you on this chart, just to look at September, October, and November, you'll notice there's a big difference there, and I wanna get to that on our next point. The next page is just our basically, basic water testing schedule, what gets tested, how often, and where. I think I included a lot of that in last year's. Again, this year we had no water violations. Wastewater, we operate two lift stations, west lift station has two submersible pumps capable of maximum of 2,900 gallons per minute, and the east lift station has three submersible pump pumps capable of maximum of 2,500 gallons per minute for a total capacity of 5,400 gallons per minute when everything's running full speed. At the bottom there, our influent and effluent flows from the ponds. Last year, the influent was 82 million, about 83. This year it's almost 160 million, just because of that really wet weather we've had, we have for a couple of months, and we discharged 160 million gallons as compared to 99 million the year before. Wastewater pond discharge results and limits. CBOD5 TSSs are strictly monitored, phosphorus is a monitor only, there's no violation if you go over. We did go over for two months, but they don't really want you to discharge, you can start in September, where they want you to wait as long as possible because of the warm weather. At that point last year, we had to discharge early just because the ponds were getting so full, and that's why those two were really close, or just over one. Last year, we only discharged within two months, and this year it was six different months we were discharging in, so we had a lot more to get rid of before everything froze up. And the Aquatic Center, just a brief overview for the revenue. Lessons were a bit down, passes were just a hair above what they were last year, admissions were a lot above, concession revenue was about the same, so total revenue is actually just about evens out. Lessons, less lessons this year than last year, but more season passes and a lot more admissions. And on July 21st, the Aquatic Center had 865 people attend that day, which is a one-day record. They also purchased the Whippet, which is a floating play feature, and it's a huge success. I mean, when they put it out, the kids just line up for it, they love it, so. That's just a brief overview of the year. Has anybody got any questions or comments? Moving on to the next, replacement of valves at the water plant, and speaking of that chart we just looked at, usually our pump, our wells run even odd, even odd, even odd, that's why they're sort of normalized, they run about the same. The problem we had... The problem we had were these valves. And the only way we knew something was, could find it was somebody had to actually get in the program and find out what it was doing. What it was doing was one filter would, the, the high-service pump that feeds the distribution would not shut off unless you man, manually shut it off. So it would drain the filter dry. So the only time we could run it is if somebody was there actually keeping an eye on it. So we ran it when we could. What we found out was the valve before the filter is a solenoid control valve with a limit switch on it. And for some reason, there, in the program, if that limit switch does not shut completely off, it tells the high-service pump not to shut off because it still thinks it's running, which is an overdesign because the filter has, is actually run by floats internally. So there's really no need for that part of the program. And what we want to replace that with is an air cushion, both of them with an air cushion check valve. What that does is eliminates the solenoid, it runs all by itself. There's, that's all that these are basically is over glorified check valves anyway. What we want to do is remove those warnings and little program features that aren't necessary from the program. Colin replaced one of them three or four years ago because he had the same problem with limit switches going out of tolerance constantly. And it just drives the whole system, really drives haywire. And we, the reason those three months are so different is because the people and the programmers that the company had the program, what told us it would be two months before we got, they could even look at it. So after doing a lot of checking around, we actually found telemetry process controls, which did our programming for the lift stations, updated all our lift stations. They came in two days, they had it fixed. So we were kind of eliminating the old programmer and I think we're going to go with these guys because they're on time. They treat us, they've always treated us very well every time we've had to use them. So basically what this, what we want to do is replace two valves, eliminate the program and some of the wiring has to be removed from those valves. The replacement from the valves will actually be by Jerby Contracting for the valve removal and replacement. Sibley Electric will remove the wiring and the limit switches. And TPC will modify the PLC program. The cost of this is about $5,000 and this has been planned since October, looking into getting this, this stuff fixed and replaced. So it was actually added to the budget because of that.
What's the status of the valves right now, Ty?
It's working right now.
Reason I'm asking that is because utility budget hasn't been approved yet.
Right.
So, like, council can do whatever they wish, but it's kind of going ahead before the budget was approved. You know, and that's why I'm asking the status of the valves if we can, because we're having that utility budget workshop at the end of February now, which is stretched out a little bit too much. Otherwise this should have been approved and we could have went right along with it, but. But council can do what they wish, but I'm just thinking the budget should be approved before we have any expenditures out of it. But if it's a dire need, then something's got to be done. So that's why I'm asking the status of the valves.
I don't think it'd be an actual total emergency, but I think it, it should be fixed as soon as we can possibly do it. I mean, like I say, if, when it goes wrong, we have no way of knowing what it's doing unless it actually, somebody actually is there to get in the program and tell us what it's doing. Like I say, it's not, we've been living with it for the past couple of months. So, I mean, another month isn't going to hurt us.
How about as far as scheduling of the contractors, are they available now? Whereas we get later into the spring and summer where their availability might be less? Or have you got them locked down?
Jerby might be a little bit of an issue, it depends on the weather, how busy they get. But I, I mean, they do everything for us. I'm sure they would make, have no problem making time to do it. John Suebeck with Sibley Electric, I'm always talking to him. So that's, I mean, we were definitely trying to schedule it three weeks out so all three of them are there within the next, within a couple of days to get it all done at once.
Well, we'll have the budget workshop for the next first meeting in March, right?
Yes.
First meeting in March is literally two weeks from now.
Yep.
Add it to the agenda in two weeks and get it approved then if, after we got the budget worked out?
I think it's just the proper procedure to do it that way. Is that okay with you, Ty?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay, that's what we'll do with that, then we'll bring it back on our first meeting in March.
Okay.
And I don't know if you need to present anything, just.
No, actually this can be on. You don't have to present it again, we'll just have it on our agenda and go through. It's just more of a formality thing.
All right. Sounds good. Has anybody got any other questions or comments?
Planning starting for the Aquatic Center already?
Yes.
In earnest?
We're already starting to do some things that, yeah. You got to start it early as possible because when it comes, it comes fast, it seems like. Seems like as soon as it's warm enough to actually work in the thing, it's, you're trying to get it filled up, so. Yes, there's definitely planning going on.
Thank you, Ty.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks. HC is ambulance service Dan, but he's not here. That's fine. But we can, we can go with this one and go with it here. And actually, Kim, if you want to present it, and Dan's behalf will be fine.
Certainly, Mayor and Council, this is a request on behalf of the ambulance crew and Dan Reich. He would like, he has four people who have signed up to attend the upcoming EMT class. And those individuals include Tim Otto, Katie Turbett, Maria Padilla and Marina Yacquez. And so he is asking that the, this group of people be approved by the council to attend the new EMT class that will be starting up soon.
So moved. Second.
Motion's made by Jessica, seconded by Sean to approve the four new EMT class trainees. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All same sign. Motion carries. Move on to new business. The fact that each one of these got separate mounts, can we do this in one or can we do it? What can we do here?
You can approve them all at once. And, you know, because it would have been appropriate too, this could have been something on consent agenda. You know, that would have been fine. So it's, it's, it's legit to just approve them all at once.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made to approve the fire services agreement along with the ambulance service agreement for the townships. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Lori, did you get who motioned and who seconded that? I didn't announce that on that one.
Yes, Tom and Jim.
Yes. Okay, that brings us down to our meetings. Any questions on any meetings coming up? Now, I'd look for a motion to adjourn this one.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Jessica, seconded by Sean to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. We are adjourned.